When Tracy was here, we're still around forty-two to forty-five. I do remember that.
And I don't, I don't know.
I can tell you because it's right.
That was no benefits on that?
Correct. There was no benefits. It was thirty-seven, six, sixty-seven, fifty-six hours.
It was what?
Fifty-six hours. That's every two weeks. Twenty-five, eighty-seven.
An hour.
Twenty-five, eighty-seven, an hour.
How long ago was that?
This was just, uh...
Three years, four?
This was, this was, uh, fifteen. And I've been doing it by myself since then, so yeah, we need the help. I'm not, I'm not lying, but...
You started you at there?
Yes, I did. No, I don't think I did. It's just, it's just a lot when you have to put these packets together and everything. You, you spend a lot of time on that kind of stuff. And even getting, even with people coming in to do applications and all that, it's not just a quick fix. It's, it's, we try to streamline it as best we can, but it still takes more good research, a lot of research.
So we'll do one pool and the whole part down? What about the professional services included, a hundred twenty-five thousand to hire a professional company? An update, modernize with all the land use and all?
That is to update the ordinances?
Is that, I mean, that's something we'd do like this, right?
That is to update, and this is only over zoning? Zoning and the subdivision guidelines and things. There's some stuff in chapter four that kind of kicks back to, from zoning. So you would have to look at chapter four as well, in our words. So there's, that's the main thing, the way we have. And I called Tripp County and La Grange, and they just did a combined effort to redo theirs at a hundred twenty-five. It was a hundred twenty-five. They had put a hundred and forty thousand. They had put a hundred and forty, but they got it for one twenty-five, but things were tracing.
Well, that's something that we, I think we definitely need.
Yeah. We need a overhaul of that. And this will be done by an outsource company.
Okay, the ten thousand dollars of the engineering consultant?
That's for me to, when, when a builder comes in and brings me plans on road construction, I have to send them to Carter and Sloot, the engineers, to look at and then send back to us to Fort Worth.
What are we paying Carter and Sloot?
Eight hundred dollars a set, I think. It went up from five. It was five whatever, I mean, just when I paid.
That would be about...
Ten sets. That'd be my life, ten to twelve sets. And I don't think we'll see more than that in a year. And if we are, we better hold on to, we're gonna need a lot more staff. If we got that many. And just so y'all know, next year, James will be retiring. And I will actually be toward the end of this budget, but I think we can survive through the last three months of whatever we got to. But I'm gonna have to hire another chief inspector. I don't know that we'll have to hire another inspector yet. That's probably at least a year out. But a chief inspector I'll have to give to replace him, and it will probably cost more than what James costs now. But that's just FYI when, if, if it goes down like he's planning. Yeah, and it's, it's, we could save about a hundred thousand dollars a year if we cut his hair.
No, man.
Yeah.
Hey, fat people don't like...
All right, so everybody's good with the developer down? Okay, the corner. Travel expenses, eleven thousand dollars for contract labor, ten thousand for transportation bodies, general supplies, other expenses. Twenty thousand dollars for body bags. Everybody have any issues with that?
Try to adjust the temperature. Maybe it'll work, maybe it won't.
Chairman, I did forget. On one of the cuts, it was two thousand which reduced on the general office supplies, and I requested that to go back in. It was on the cuts that Randy had made. I didn't mind the other two, but that two thousand is what I, I've got.
And that's, that was all the ones from the design. You might, might have come in after that.
I, I was here when we did that.
When we did that?
We talked about it, but we just took it.
No, I mean, she needs to know, to know. Cause they looked through this list and only took two things.
Well, we took two things, I think, and that wasn't one of them.
Oh, okay.
Doing it out and sweeping.
So it's good, yeah? Thank you.
It's not there.
I was not there?
Not there.
I was not there?
Not there. The district attorney, we didn't get any, we didn't get a request from him to come before us?
Well, I'm sure they'll do it later.
Maybe the polygones?
No, their time was now.
Yeah, cause if they knew about it.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll listen to you.
They'll listen to you, have the email. So did Julia?
So no changes from last year.
District Attorney, I probably didn't call him. Brian threw me off and we went back to the, to two thousand.
Yeah, so we cut that out?
The two thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
So Randy took out this thing out?
That's the cover of my code books that I got to have.
Because the general supplies office, even though it was requested for eight, it was cut to six, we spent last year four thousand seven fifty-five. So, especially Brian has about, I don't know, four, thirteen hundred more dollars from... And if you got money this year, you can maybe spend it this year?
Well, it's, it's only this code change that we got covered. I mean, it changes this year, twenty-twelve. And that's all the Georgia amendments, all the IBC and RRC codes that will happen. We've had to purchase the books already.
I said we go back to that.
Yeah, we go to part-time plan at Levisson.
If you take, we go to that part-time plan, or you can take that two thousand and then back in for that? If that's what we wanted to do?
Those are all the...
It, it's not for pens, and it, this is for books that we get, code books we gotta have. This isn't...
Did you have them purchased?
Yes, ma'am, that I've already purchased with this year's budget that I didn't have it planned for.
Well, thank you.
So, oh. So now go ahead, go ahead and eat it, right?
Why do you need to do it next year? You already got it.
No, that's true.
All right, we can...
All right, cut it, cut it in half. Cut me to a thousand. It was eleven hundred dollars is what it cost.
Okay.
So cut me to a thousand. Add a thousand back, huh? Is that decent?
All right. In the corner, it's okay, right? I can't, I'm good on the corner. The DA is okay. EMS. By the way, while you're this topic, do we want to go past seven or we want to stop at seven? If we stop at seven, we can have another meeting, but I don't have a long to that.
No, I'm moving pretty fast, though.
Single mark seven. Single mark seven. Sound like, yeah, I was hoping to keep it to two hours. EMS. Fifty-five thousand for the fees paid to the twenty-four hundred dollars for the rental from where the home come out stations. Deals and fees, eleven thousand for the annual state license fee. I just asked Ryan if we wanted to go past seven, single mark seven. And I want to try and keep it to two hours. But, you, you want single mark seven?
I'm, hey, I'll forgive the done.
The, um, games and fees for eleven thousand for the annual state license fee. Thousand dollars for the process and this, total of twelve thousand. You guys have anything on that? Bushnell, the stabbing, stays the same. Extension service, no changes. Last year. Facilities maintenance. Repairs and maintenance for building expenses, eighty-five thousand. Contract labor expenses, excuse me, twenty-seven thousand. To have the city of West Point maintain the right way for the Northwest area's business.
Is that something we pay the past years, or is that new for this year's budget, the twenty-seven thousand for the city of West Point maintaining?
It's new for this year's budget because we found the contract that was signed in twenty-fifteen. We didn't know about it.
No, we didn't. They just...
I didn't know about it.
They didn't know that.
They didn't know that. Everybody signed off on it.
Yeah, but nobody seems to know about it.
Exactly.
So we haven't been paying them?
That's right. They've been doing the work. Or, part of the work.
Or some of it.
Some of the work, I get paid because they know about the agreement, needed to wait, so we found it, so I stuck it in here in case we gotta pay it. If they're watching to that, we'll be paying it.
They also, everybody signed off on it. We did and they did, so, everybody.
Well, what does that make it to this week? I say it says entries, but when I drive through that park, if I were a business, I'm not sure it's attractive enough to go. But I'm, I mean, a few crate myrtles or oats here and there on the medians would certainly just say we need to do something.
Well, they're just supposed to maintain it. They're supposed to do landscaping.
They just want, like, this is, we need a little bit. That's all I'm saying.
I was prepared.
Just a simple cutting and going is beyond that point. Now, it's gonna cost a lot more money because it hasn't been maintained.
Has not been maintained. If I were a business, that's the first thing I would notice when I wrote in there, is that this doesn't look like an up and coming business park.
Looks like it.
It looks, yes, it does not look.
And we got a landscape right there on the road beside it?
But here's, here's...
Mr. Feers, he's right there. If I was him, if I was him, I'd be upset that that was beside my lesson. It ma- makes me look like I'm not doing my job, even though it's not his job.
Well, we need to have a landscaping plan or something for that.
For the entrances?
For the entr- well, all the way through really, but the entrances especially.
Cause where we're gonna put that new sign, it's just gonna be right there.
Yeah.
Right, so that museum is gonna sit there and then they're gonna get it right?
It's gone tomorrow. So this is a landscape plan for the business park?
Can the extension service do that for us?
I can ask.
So the twenty-seven thousand to West Point?
Do I have it?
Here's, here's contract, what city is, is it expiration?
I think it's one of those automatic renewals.
Is this twenty-seven thousand annually, or you have twenty-seven, twenty-seven more?
Annually. It's like if you cut the grass three or four times a year, twenty-seven thousand dollars to lock it up.
Pay for it, it'll look a little bit less.
Here's, here's this grid right here. Right away maintenance, mowing, trimming around signs, obstacles on the right away, shoulder once per month, and more frequently during June, July, August, and September. Pick up trash, trimmings.
Who enforces that? No one? Yeah, that's what I figured.
We just, I just found this about a month ago.
We had lawn service to do that. It would look so much better because they would take pride in what they did.
And then maintenance of the main entrances.
Do we have to do that?
Do we have to?
Oh, oh, here's the terms. Here's the term. Now, this was signed in December twenty-fifteen. This, oh, this, it gets worse.
Oh, thank you.
This agreement should remain in effect until terminated by thirty, by thirty days written notice from either party, and in no case shall the term of this agreement exceed fifty years. So it's a thirty day, not to exceed fifty years.
Well, we can, we can have a thirty day notice, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to terminate that thing.
Let's see, can you see what...
Or see if they'll actually do a better job of what they're supposed to be doing.
Maybe just as...
Of course, if they're doing it, we're not paying them, then they have to...
They just think that person would take care of that there. They like to have him settle all the cases.
And make a new library, so who wouldn't have to worry about this?
That's a safe move.
Yeah.
You're just saying, that's how it's been person for mine. Just do the, just do the, the business part.
But the advice problem is not people, it's the salary levels.
Well, I know that, and they would.
And library equipment.
By the way, they're cut, they're mowing in three. Yeah, I've been many sitting in the back.
All four of them?
Yes, all four of them.
Not two, not one, not three, not two and a half, four, all four.
All right, guys, what do we want to do about the twenty-seven thousand?
Well, we have to replace it. I mean, they have, they can't stop mowing right now. Even a little bit they're doing because we can't, we gotta replace it.
I don't think that I saw last Thursday where anything had been moved.
The, the grass in the median at the entrances appears to have been mowed, and we needed a round sign, so it's not growing up. But I, from my observation, that's all it's been done.
Yeah.
And all of that decile was too.
There is, I think it was, we could go right through it.
Those are the only things that look like it, but it could be wrong. Let's see if we can do a landscape, get a landscaping plan. Put all the way for the entrances.
Yeah, I think they'll do better.
From Steve?
I'd say Steve would be hard.
So we're gonna leave this in for now?
The horticulture class at the high school could do better than this. There's a lot of bush out there. There's not a crepe myrtle. There's not a unicorn, that's...
Well, I think probably after this, I don't think there's any mortar near the entrances either, so...
Yeah, well, crepe myrtle lasts without me.
Yes, I don't really want to throw anywhere. So do we want to leave this in or take it out a little bit?
I say leave it in, leave the money in because we do have to maintain that, but whether we do it...
We need to make sure it's being done.
Yeah, if we're gonna try to make it a property pretty in there to market that piece of property, I think we need to take it.
Yeah, we need to make sure.
Like I said, if we leave it in and West Point's supposed to do it, then we need to give them guidelines of what we want them to do. And we're paying for it.
I'm not gonna do any more than what that agreement says.
And it's pretty bad.
Our problem.
Right. So, maybe time for a thirty day notice on that. By our own person, our own.
Let's get the plan from Steve, see what he says.
All right, here's the town. I take.
All right, well, wait, before we go, I said this, wait, so I just wanna ask you a question.
Sure.
We took out the air conditioner that this building is gonna need.
It's in the block.
It's in the block.
No, it's nowhere. Oh. It's in, it's in the, it's in the courthouse renovation. It's blocked by a team for a future year, not next year.
I mean, I know right now why it's cold. It's, it feels good.
Well, this is not the third floor, that thing...
Right, but, you know, that thing is on its last leg up there. I'm not saying we need to put it in, I'm just saying we need to make sure. You know, I'm really concerned as to how hot it's gonna be this summer. If that sucker goes out, you know, that's gonna be bad. Wouldn't know how to buy a new one, right, and just... Cause I walked upstairs, I went up there, I went all around the courthouse today, and it made me cut, this is the coldest room in there, cause I was all up there and I was thinking, gosh, it's hot in this place.
Set points on six degrees, that's why.
Oh, why? Well, they must have known I was coming in here. Anyway, I just was saying, so it's not ending for this year or next year? It'll be two more years.
Unless, unless an emergency comes up and they threaten it with being...
Sue.
No, being tossed to the lobby.
That goes to the chairman, huh?
No, he's the county manager or Jamie. Not me.
Well, some subpoenaed Jamie.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Well, anyway, like I said, I was just concerned about it. I was walking around, you had all those people over there for the jury duty? Oh, man, I was like, hell, how y'all standing? Anyway, all right, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay. I'm gonna go on now.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I take. We have the technical services. Forty thousand dollars for a new margin cat line, email system, and forty thousand dollars for coverage. We have the communications internet services expenses. Fifty thousand dollars for cat line, internet services, repairs providers include program, etc. Expanding internet services to three parts, an increase in the eligibility and support for new facilities. Software expenses include fifteen thousand for cat line upgrades, computer operating systems, productivity, something. Still, I need to explain to me why we need internet to the red part.
Oh, that we do.
I don't think we do either.
Part of that is for security surveillance.
Security surveillance?
Yes, ma'am.
What time is security surveillance?
Putting cameras out to monitor the fields so that they're not damaged after hours when nobody's there.
I don't agree with any of them. I, I just, I just don't see the need for internet services to the red parts. Well, we have people all over this county that can't get in there.
One of the reasons why was because the, uh, the communities, the associations were asking for it so that they could plug their, um, credit card machines into it because they're having a hard time running it off their phone system. And, uh, and then, like you said, the security, but it's more of a security to, because we've had several people break into the concession stand at the football complex, and it's more of trying to keep people from breaking into that area.
How many times has that happened?
It's happened twice since I've been here.
And we've had incidents at other parts where individuals are leaving contraband for the inmates.
That's true.
Well, then the president, the president can, uh, put in for the internet service at three parts.
I just don't, I just don't see the need for it.
And that's worth about seven thousand dollars of the fifty.
Yeah, that is. Because you do it with those three parts, and you're gonna have to do it for Tulsa Place, and you're gonna have to come back and do it for Pine Mountain Valley, even though Pine Mountain Valley owns it, we run it. You know, how do you?
Seven thousand?
Seven thousand.
All right, anybody have any sign news?
I do, ma'am. We need to really consider putting the phone system into the budget. It failed again this weekend. It was cut.
How much?
Sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five thousand was removed from the budget for the phone system. The frequency is becoming more and more. It's gone from three weeks to two weeks, and now it's about to be between two and one weeks before I have to go and physically reset the phone system. The phone system was installed in two thousand nine.
If we put the new phone system in now, will we renovate the courthouse and that phone system will still?
Be good.
Yes.
And that, and that sixty-five thousand is for the courthouse, the admin building, and...
Community development.
Those three buildings. The instruments.
Yes, everybody gets a new desk phone, we get a new brain that controls all the system. The company that we currently have is no longer a business as well, just so you know.
Who is that?
In lots of.
What do you need, what do you need more, the forty-three thousand dollars for that internet service or the sixty-five thousand for the phone? Sir, what do you need more, forty-three thousand dollars for the communications internet service expense or sixty-five thousand dollars for the phone system?
Though, if we don't have internet, we cannot conduct day-to-day business.
For the phone system to put down, is that the whole building?
It is this building, the admin building, and community development.
So all of them go down?
All of them go down. Nobody's dialing out and nobody's calling in.
That's not good business.
We debate about calling them by, so we're just... So we get a little breathe when we call them.
I bet that's an expense we need.
All right, we'll put it back in there for now. Great, anything else?
So we took the seven thousand out, so we really just need fifty-two thousand. Although I was gonna suggest use for that seven thousand.
Well, that's what I was saying, is that do we need, does it have to be forty-three thousand? It wasn't that I don't think we need internet service, but does it have to be the forty-three thousand dollars? Is there any way we can take more than the seven thousand to put toward the phone? Cause right now, you're looking at, you know, what, ninety, ninety-five thousand between the internet service and the phone. If you took the seven, you know, cause we took the seven thousand out, that's ninety-five thousand. I just wondered if there's any way we could come down more off the...
Well, off the phone, I, I do have a couple of vendors that told me it's going to be between forty-seven and fifty out the door.
Cause I mean, I agree, I think we need phone system. We're just trying to figure out a way to make it work.
We're on pace to spend about forty thousand dollars out of that internet services line this, this year.
Yes.
I said we're on pace to spend about forty thousand dollars out of that internet services line out of IT for this year. The current year.
And that's with added increase of broadband?
That's what I don't need.
Correct.
How, what kind of increase are you looking at?
Doubling the speed.
Doubling?
Doubling. I'm bringing more facilities on the internal network. So they're, they won't have a DSL connection at their office anymore. That will go away, and they'll be actually on the two-hundred meter fiber pipe, which is more stable and reliable than the DSL terminal.
What would it be?
Facility maintenance, uh, soil conservation are two slated, up and coming.
And all of that was that with the email system, I'm saying I did. But we did, uh, Susan, we did take out some of that in the the community development from the, that we cut that section forward down.
Yeah.
Put two of it back.
That's true.
And put two of it back in for...
No.
Eleven of the words, one of the back in.
So that might be about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars saved this year.
Right. I mean, I, I agree, I think we do need to have the phone system in.
And turn that to sixty-five thousand. All of them. Twenty-seven and fifty. Okay, so that's fine. Yes, it is. I'm just gonna give y'all my opinion. I'd like to schedule very shortly because I'd like to see what you have, what you have before we go to the public queue with this.
Okay.
You know, like you did, like you, you know.
Well, I don't know.
I was like, can you?
I don't know when we can do that.
What? Tomorrow, Thursday?
Yeah, that'd be tomorrow, Thursday, I guess.
Are you going for yourself?
Yes, I gotta wait.
Is everybody getting ready?
Well, I'm not getting ready, my safety.
Have another, maybe, maybe another hour to wrap it up?
Yeah.
Um, tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, can you do that?
I can't do Friday.
You can't do Friday?
I can do tomorrow.
You can do tomorrow?
I can do.
You're still talking about number four?
Can you do four, is that...
It's hard for me to get here, four.
Okay, we can do five. Okay. Because I'm gonna go back to and digest some of this on my notes. But if we could finish that up, start tomorrow. We don't have that much. That are at the end, so Thursday, Thursday and Friday?
Thursday is...
Thursday or tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
No, I can do tomorrow, I can do...
But we can't do the twenty-four hour numbers.
Oh, that's fine.
This, this, we're beyond that.
Let's do, um... I do Thursday, I do Thursday. Okay, Thursday.
All right. So then, notice tonight?
We should be able to wrap it up in my... I just would feel more comfortable, um, rather than walking in Tuesday and doing a, and a public hearing on something that we really haven't...
We'll be, we'll be these changes and have to all my emails tomorrow. And there's, there's three things that have come up that need to go back in the budget. I remember a couple of minutes ago, the board approved that dependent health coverage went from fourteen percent to fifteen. I gotta add seventy-five thousand dollars back in this budget for that. The sheriff's office, uh, he's asking for, um, a car was wrecked recently, and he needs to replace that car. So we got the insurance proceeds recently of twenty-nine thousand, but he needs twenty thousand more to replace that vehicle. So I need to put in...
Insurance proceeds again?
Twenty-nine thousand insurance proceeds, add twenty thousand more...
Okay.
To buy that replacement vehicle that was wrecked. And that becomes splosh twenty-nine thousand.
The vehicle?
The vehicle. And, um...
What was the first one that was all right?
Uh, the dependent health coverage went from fourteen percent to, went to twenty-five percent. That is seventy-five thousand dollars. And then, uh, the last one in public works, in the current budget, was some money for fuel card readers and new gas and pumps.
Oh, pumps.
And the pumps. We replaced the actual pumps, but we didn't get a chance to do the fuel card readers. So I need to, I keep thirty-eight thousand dollars in next year's budget to replace fuel card readers. Because that has to be bet out in bits back, so we just don't have the time between hours and hours to do that. So I gotta add seventy-five thousand plus twenty-nine thousand plus twenty thousand plus thirty-eight thousand.
I'm forty-three thousand, right?
No, but thirty-three is splosh.
And, yeah, yeah, the, the twenty will be splosh nineteen, the seventy-five from general funds, and the thirty-eight for the fuel card readers will be in general fund. So, so we'll, we'll, we'll take all these additions and cuts, put them on a piece of paper, and shoot it out by email tomorrow afternoon.
That'd be good, thank you.
Just to see where we're at.
Okay, and we're gonna do Thursday. Right, bye, bye.
Plus, just for an hour?
Thank y'all. Well, I mean, I mean, if we can get through it now.
But that's just the general fund. Y'all wanna go spend any time on special revenue fines and enterprise funds and all the funds?
Walk two hours.
At least two hours, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Our tour done.
Yeah, there you go. All right, okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, all right, we are done.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.